Call this regular meeting of Bradford City Council to order. The first item of business is the agenda. I have two items to add to that. The first one being the EDAC recommendations to the Boundary Economic Development Commission as 12A and the grant in aid. We were going to make that a motion at the regular meeting tonight. So I'll expect someone to form that, and so that will be item 12B, recommendation from this morning's.
Yes. Just reminded Toby.
And so can I have a motion to adopt the agenda as added to? Council Smith, Councilor Doherty, all those in favor, carry. And we have minutes from March 18th, public hearing minutes, a motion to adopt. Council Doherty, Council Kendall, all those in favor. And regular meeting minutes, March 18th, motion to adopt. Council Smith, Council Wyers, all those in favor. All right, we have our first delegation, and I would welcome the Boundary Regional Agricultural Society to present to us a proposed Grand Forks Food Charter. Welcome, Mr. Russell.
Good evening, and thank you Mayor Taylor and council members for attending to us. And I think you guys have seen most of the information, so I feel like our purpose here is primarily to provide answers to any questions you might have. What we're proposing is a food charter that council would potentially adopt, and we're hoping that that is the case. The rationale for why is essentially we believe this is a strong statement of values for our community in terms of support for regional food systems and a strong sense of food security in the community. And we believe that the benefit of this would be that it would serve to provide a valuable sounding board for decision-making at the ground council table in terms of decisions that have to do with local food systems. That's all I have to say. I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Kind of opening for discussion. Counsel, we don't normally offer at this regular meeting, but we have a citizen who wants to speak on this matter. Would counsel approve that? Counsel?
Hi, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I believe we need a motion. I do need an affirmative support.
I think that's what I'm asking for.
Yes, I'm.
Make that motion. All those in favor? Okay, yes, please.
Thank you. I would like to support the agricultural society's charter, and also note that the environment committee recently met and voted with one exception to support the charter. I think the agricultural society should be commended for taking a positive stance with respect to genetically modified organisms. I think that given our experience with Mr. and Mrs. Percy Schmeister from Saskatchewan being sued by Monsanto for seven years for having an organic farm next to their, Monsanto crops should be a good lesson for us. And I think we also need to take very seriously the idea of labeling GMO products. If we know how much sugar and fat and protein are in our foods, we should have the right to know and to choose not to have GMO products. One of the other basic concerns about GMO not only is the fact that it's causing tumors and cancer in rats and lab animals, but also, once a decision is made, we don't have much chance to go back on it. So at the very least, I would urge the council to adopt the charter, and at the very least, if the council doesn't do that, then seriously consider requesting that our restaurants, our grocery stores label GMO and that we require that GMO be labeled if it's going to be here. I'd like to see it nowhere near our community, but if it's here, I think we have a right to know about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, further comment? Council Wyers and Council Crowe.
Yes, the speaker was Karen, Megan from the, and she does sit on the environment committee.
Yes.
And at our regular meeting last Thursday, the environment committee did resolve to support the food charter as presented and recommended that council adopt the food charter. And so I just wanted to carry, to bring that forward at this time. There was just one opposition at the table.
Thanks, Your Honor. My last name is pronounced Bond.
Bond, B-A-G-N.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. And so it is a recommendation from the environment committee, in effect, with almost unanimous.
Our minutes haven't been submitted to council as yet, so therefore it is just an item extracted from our minutes that will be coming forward.
Counsel Crowe.
Yeah, I guess question through you two, Rowley, that when I look at the charter, I see things that we're basically already doing, like number five and number seven with the community garden, and then the, I think there was some waste diversion, I can't remember. But there are some that I'm trying to get a handle on where we would fit in. Number one says champion the right of all residents to safe and nutritious food by developing policies that support secure, dignified, ongoing access to an abundance of food produced locally. I can't think, like off the top of my head, what a policy would look like. So is there any other, like, information that you have as background information that maybe was done in other communities, how they achieved these options?
Yeah, we could probably pull together some of that information. I don't have that offhand, but I think that what we see is, we would like this to serve as a kind of a guiding document, so that when you, if you are developing policies that pertain to food systems, that you can use this document, if you adopt it, as a rationale essentially to make decisions that do support local food systems, so.
Oh, because it said by developing the policies, so I wasn't sure on that. Fair enough. Second one is, like, importance of local seed and food production to federal, provincial, and regional government partners. That's our bailiwick. That's what we can do. That's what we've done for other organizations in the past, and like I say, some of them. And supporting agriculture through initiatives. I know through economic development and stuff, there's been discussion on that. I just, the ones that I kind of looked at, and I'm like, well, how would we do that? Right? So if there is any more background info, it'd be awesome to see, you know, some kind of an example of where we can go with it.
Yeah, that sounds great. We will do that. I do think, though, that there are a lot of, there is a lot of policymaking around the council table, for example, bylaws and OCP and so on, that does pertain to, using that as an example, providing secure food system and ongoing access to food. And so I don't think it's necessarily policies specifically targeted at that, but more generally incorporating those principles into policies that are being developed around the table. But we would be happy to get, dig into that a little deeper and give you guys more examples of what's been done elsewhere.
Yeah, that would help me, definitely.
Counsel Smith.
I was just wondering about Karen's point she was making about having, is it local producers to divulge whether or not we're using GMOs, or are you talking about extra food?
Well, extra food's overweighting. I'd like to know if they're buying GMO foods, if they're selling GMO foods, they should be labeled. And Monsanto's bought it.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that's like a help candidate thing, not something that we as a municipality require.
Right, I don't see that specifically in the charter, right? Although there is a desire for honesty in terms of labeling, so I think that's one of those things that this community is on a path to being a leader in terms of healthy food and healthy lifestyle. But this charter I see as the first step in a philosophical commitment. And further comment?
Administrator.
Mr. Allen.
There's a few things that I just, you know, by council adopting a charter, council works under the community charter, which governs and regulates how the city council operates. Then what happens is council follows policies that they set, so this really doesn't fit into kind of the structure that council has. Now, the wording of it could be amended. There's a couple points in here that are identified, I think, that the presenter talked about, such as the considerations of, point number eight, consideration of applications for municipal land to do these for food production. Now, there would be zoning for agricultural lands, and they could be identified, and that would be in the OCP or the SCP. Number 10, foster civic culture that inspires Grand Forks residents and city departments to support local food producers and food programs by adopting food purchasing practices for city-sponsored events. I think that the, you know, some of these things are, they're going to be difficult, like we tend to talk about different policies and stuff. Now, there are different policies that we could administer, say, for instance, for point number six, we could come into a green credit policy, for instance, for people producing food on their properties, and they met a specific criteria, and we were able to give them a reduced water consumption rate and consider that throughout the process. But I'm a little bit reserved about council, I make a recommendation to council to adopt this charter without first having the lawyer review it for us as well, because there may be some commitments in here that council might not be able to commit to. And I think there's some really good principles in here, but I just want to make sure that we don't back ourselves into a corner that potentially is dealing with something that's dealt by the federal government or the provincial government, and I'd like to make sure that we are following the recommendations of the lawyer when we're dealing with this.
Thank you. With that caution, does counsel wish to put a motion on the floor? We can receive the document, and I think that what we're telegraphing here is support in principle for this whole concept with the proviso that we have an opportunity to take a look at it specifically in terms of how it might affect issues of liability and land use and other things. But in general, by the response of council, I hear support for this. Counsel Rochigan.
I don't know what's wrong with me today, but I'll move that motion that you presented there.
Do we receive the presentation this evening?
Yes.
Counsel Doherty, seconds. And again, not to be negative at all here, I think that what we're going through is that this is their job to protect us from our own evils. And so reviewing it at this point is a very judicious move, but I don't think in any way signals our lack of support. And the motion is on the table. All those in favor? Opposed, carry. Thank you, Rowley.
Thank you very much.
And that brings us down to the exciting part of personal reports from council. And I begin with Michael, Counsel Rochigan.
Counsel, oh. I guess it's getting on with me today.
No, we're not on mic, we're having mic problems. They're all fixed, are they?
Except for me.
Are they off?
I only have, one thing I would like to mention here, Mr. Mayor, as I don't have that later from this morning, we'll speak to later in today's agenda, but I would like to say that those courses that were, like I say, I can't speak today for whatever reason, that the council allowed me to take, will be coming to a finish here on April 5th, either supple law, as well as citizen engagement, and I've thoroughly enjoyed them, they're three-month courses, and I've learned a ton. While they're not finished, I would like to let you know that I do have interest in taking one more course, and I'll be asking for a motion to allow me to take one more course through Dalhousie University, Sustainable Communities, which would be similar to the course that you two took in winter. So I would like to move a motion to allow me to take a Sustainable Communities course at Dalhousie University. For the cost of, I believe it's $795, I tried to look it up, but it's roughly $800.
Counsel, do you wish to deal with that now, or do you wish to see more detail?
Does, excuse me.
Counsel Crowe.
How does that fit with the policy? Have we revised through you to the administrator, have we revised that policy yet?
I believe so.
But so that it would be, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, yes, that is, we have revised the policy, and it is before council to make that decision.
Right.
So if there is a motion for, it is council's decision.
It follows, yeah.
Okay, you can make the decision now, or you can make it at the next meeting with the sufficient time? Is there a timeframe?
Yeah, actually, being that I was on the auto-attendee last meeting, I was going to make the motion then, being that the course itself begins on the 15th of April.
Counsel Kendall.
If we revise that policy, I haven't seen it, is there, can you, through you to the CAO, can you?
We have some. You might have been on.
You might have been on, yeah.
I just, I'd like to.
Review the policy.
To review it, yeah.
Counsel Crowe.
Is there a way to meet the deadlines? The only thing I would have liked to have seen would be just the course description and everything like that, right? Like the background information for it. So is there, when's our next meeting?
April 5th.
Oh, so it is the, and you have to register in advance.
Yes.
Counsel Smith, you, I thought you had your hand up. No. Okay, I'm not sure.
Well, was it, was it the motion, anybody seconded it?
No, we haven't had a second or sort of motion. Counsel Wyers, seconded the motion. Okay, so this is to approve, yeah.
I'm just, personally, I'm just concerned that we haven't had, I mean, an email at least could have been circulated amongst council for some inputs. This is kind of like a surprise, you know?
Well, we did approve the first course. I thought we had discussed both courses at the same time.
That's another one, this is the third.
This is the third.
Counsel Rochigan.
Yeah, thank you. I did mention in those first emails, but those were first emails, if you recall, were asked by the mayor to be circulated, and that he wasn't in favor of those being circulated, so I stayed clear at this time of circulating emails in regards to that because of the backlash I received from the mayor when doing this session. That's why I never sent out an email.
Okay, so we have a secondary on the table.
Did you second it?
Yes, Counsel Wyers, seconded it. Counsel Crowe.
For the first two courses, do we get a report card, and will there be a graduation?
I will, I will write up, no different than you guys have to, for when you attend the conference, I will, or you can go with local. That's a guarantee.
Counsel Smith, and then Counsel Kendall.
So what are you hoping to get out of it? Like what, how's, I guess, what's the benefit to the city?
Learning how to make our city more sustainable, no different than I was supposed you two going out to Windsor for that conference. It's the same thing, is just to learn, to get more knowledge, to be able to apply more to this position as a council.
Counsel Kendall.
I'm just gonna, because I haven't reviewed the policy that was voted on, I can't make an informed decision, so I'll be voting against it simply because I'm not 100% sure what the policy entails or how it affects the other members of council.
Okay. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Motion's carried. And further, Counsel Rochigan.
That's everything, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Doherty.
I got a short one, Your Worship. At the end of the March, I attend the hockey tournament at the arena. There was a lot of people coming out of town, nice hockey for the kids, and I gave out 250 pins.
Yes, that was excellent.
To the people out of town. I hope the cities don't broke. So they were very happy about it. I gave it to the players, to some of the parents that were at their greenhouse.
We'll probably see a new pin in the next little while, too.
Yes.
It's good that you're getting them out there.
And that's my report, too, Worship.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counsel Wyers.
Thank you, Your Worship. Well, I also attended the PB Tier Four Championships here in Grand Forks, and I was happy to present them with $225, plus the gift certificate, remember, Your Worship, that we had?
Yes.
Won at the human dog sled races in Greenwood. So they were very, very appreciative.
We took the cup.
We did. We kept the cup, but I passed only gift certificates, so it was very well received. So thank you very much, counsel, for those of you who chose to participate, and thank you, Patrick, Counsel Doherty, for your participation. I know you supported the family that had the opportunity to attend throughout the week. Continuing with my report, March 19th, I attended the Concerned Citizens Town Hall Meeting on the Proposed Regional District Domestic Animal Control Bylaw, the A11511, where there was a standing room audience deliberated over the proposal to amend the current animal control bylaw. I could find no provision in the new bylaw for the protection of domestic animals, and referred the study completed for the Regional District of Central Okanagan entitled Dog Control Service Report, and it was compiled by Nelson Welch Consulting out of Kelowna back in October 2012. So they came up with some excellent comments that identified and examined key issues with their existing services over there in the central Okanagan. And I think we can all remember the case in the news media of Diesel, the dog that's been in jail for, confined for two years.
Thumrap.
Yes, yes. So, you know, we learn from other people's mistakes, right? Or other communities' mistakes. And it's also redesigning their animal control bylaw built on the foundation of really the responsible dog ownership. Now, March the 20, I'm gonna move down to March the 21st, was the Grand Forks Environment Committee meeting, and the minutes are in the draft form at this time and will be circulated to council accordingly. I just received them last Friday, so with the holiday and that, I haven't had no opportunity to review them. On March the 27th, I attended the Economic Development Essentials for Local Leaders Workshop in Castle Guard with Deputy Corporate Secretary Sarah Winton, and this workshop was hosted by the Ministry of Jobs Tourism and Skills Training. Presenters included Cybok, Sidet, and the ministry representative, Diane Brooks. She chaired the workshop. I will follow up with a written report that I will circulate for the benefit of EDAC, our EDAC committee, in the absence of representation from the committee, so there might be some information there, and I'll pass along the package that I received for Counselor Kendall and Counselor Smith. Further, I do have from this morning's Committee of the Whole, Roy Ronigan, Mr. Ronigan spoke with regards to the riparian areas around Overton Creek. Roy recommended a discussion take place with Grace McGregor and Mark Anderson. I also wanted to bring forward at this time that a recommendation that council revisit, resolve that council, for the revisitation of the study that was done in 1982 whereby Kerwood Lydell Associates, consultants for the city of Grand Forks at that time, addressed a letter dated March 25th, 1982, to the province of B.C. with regard to the Overton Creek watershed. And I'd like a report back to council through staff, so that is my motion at this time.
I second it, Counsel Doherty, in discussion. So this morning's discussion, for those that weren't here, is focused around the Gilpin area called Overton Creek, which is, the city has a water license, and so there was a presentation this morning, and as a one step forward, Counsel Wyers is bringing it forward that we begin looking at the data and information that we have from this previous study. So it's a first step to really looking at protecting that area and the source of our water up until 1970? Can't remember.
I think it was 79 or something, 80?
Yeah, so it is always a potential source of water for us and one that we still retain water rights on.
Yes, the license.
So that's the background on it, the motions on the floor. Further comment?
I need a second.
We did get it, Counsel Doherty.
Thank you.
Mr. Allen.
Was that going to be referred to the Environment Committee as well for comments before the report came back to council?
Yes, yes.
Was that part of the resolution?
Yes, it was.
Yes.
Okay, and we'll add that to.
We will include that.
Yes.
That's where we're gonna have Mr. Ronigan's report referred to the Environment Committee as well.
Exactly. Okay, Counsel Kendall.
The existing Kettle River watershed study that's been, I think, finished at this point?
No, it's still got a couple of years to go, but we are at a stage now that.
Has that issue been addressed in that study already? Are we kind of redoing, is that not part of the Kettle River watershed?
It is.
It is part.
Right, but in fact, it's really good timing, because they've done the technical study and have just released the technical information, and now they're looking at sort of mitigating things that they can do in various places within the region that would protect streams, so it is right on time with what they will support right now. Again, I mean, what we're doing here is, we're going to be using some of our staff time, yes, but we're looking at this as being funded by various levels of government, not necessarily just the city or the region.
And to answer our CAO's query, I did have, further being resolved, that the delegate presentation at the April 2nd Committee of the Whole by Mr. Roy Ronigan be referred to the Grand Forks Environment Committee for their comments.
And your secondary is okay with that?
Yes.
Thank you. Ready for the question? All those in favor? Opposed, carry. Thank you very much, Counsel.
You're welcome.
And further?
That completes my report.
Counsel Kendall.
Thank you, Your Worship. On March 26th, I attended the monthly Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting for the city. At this meeting, a regional initiative was brought forward, discussed and approved by the committee. The information is included as a late item in today's agenda package, and at that time, I would like to speak to that information when it comes up in the late, the late agenda package, and that's all I have for your report.
All right, thank you. Counsel Crowe.
Yeah, on March 11th, I attended the BDA, or Boundary District Arts Council Board Meeting, and then we saw some of the results there, giving a presentation today. And then I attended the Gallery Two Board Meeting on the 19th, and I also attended the, I guess, Town Hall Dog Bylaw Meeting along with yourself and Counsel Wyers. It was interesting. There, you know, a little bit of heat generated from it. I think the result was positive, that we've gotten information that we can then send back to the RDKB to hopefully include or uninclude, which is a new word I just made up, into that proposed bylaw that's coming up. So I think that was a pretty productive one.
All right, thank you.
There weren't a lot of dogs.
Counsel Smith.
Thank you, Worship. On the 21st, I attended the Environment Committee meeting. Couple of things that we touched on were ongoing nephrometer readings that are being taking place, and Paul Pinnard had an opportunity to park it at one location for a while to see what the readings were, so it's interesting to see how that worked out. There'll be more when the, when the minutes are approved. And then the bat houses, there was a big bat meeting, or bat construction thing through the boundary. for bat construction thing through the bounty coworkers guild. So they built 14 of them. So we're looking at finding appropriate places to place them. And there's a bunch of events coming up. Counselor Wires can probably speak better to it. I mean, she was kind of assuring that subcommittee for the events coming up. But there's a bunch of stuff coming along, so. On the 26th, of course, I attended the EDAC meeting. And there were a couple of things that came out that the committee resolved to bring to council this evening. And they revolve around our recent branding exercise and what do we do now to market our community and get our identity out there. So now that we have the brand book, the brand package, we need a management plan, like a way to implement it to get it out there. So the EDAC resolved to recommend to council to have a brand management plan developed. So I'd like to make that a motion.
And a secondary to that, Counselor Kendall. And is there, you see a budget amount being required for that?
Yeah. We were kind of talking around the table, maybe 5,000 for a consultant to come up with a plan for us.
Okay. So we're looking for support in principle at this point, and that you would finalize the details of it in a future?
If there was an allocation that had to be made now, so that it's in this year's budget, I'd like, that's kind of what we're seeking for.
Okay. No, I'm just thinking, at this point, we're probably better off to approve it in principle, that you go ahead and then find out what it's going to cost you and bring that back to council for finalizing. You know, it might be more or less than that.
Right.
It gives you to go ahead, to go ahead and price it out and bring back something firm for council. Or?
I'm just wondering if it would be the EDAC that does that, or if perhaps the RCAOC could, you know, suggest a course, a best course for that. Does it apply as an RFP? Or do we just ask a couple of consultants to, you know?
Okay. Can I get some help here, Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We would recommend that once the resolution was adopted by council, that staff look after the securing the purchasing component and bring a report back to council on the findings of, you know, we could talk to a couple of consultants that would deliver the service, such as the one that developed the brand and then look into that. Because our purchasing policy says anything under $5,000 requires three prices to be sought. Anything over 5,000, $10,000 requires, or sorry, anything under 5,000 the city could purchase. Anything over 5,000, between 5,000 and 10,000, requires three verbal quotes. So we would like to make sure we have that for backup for our files for auditing purposes. So we could find out, prepare an RFP, or even just look at verbal prices from some consulting services.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, absolutely.
And so the motion is to go ahead with it without tagging money to it right now?
And have a report back from staff.
Yeah. So we would have a report back. So the motion's on the floor. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Thank you.
Okay. So a second resolution that came out was I'd done a little research into promotional videos, something that we can take out to trade shows, something that we can put on social media, our own website, that kind of gets our message out in a variety of ways. I talked to a fellow graduate from the Bank of Film School, Nick Green, who's a rep, you know, this is his hometown, basically. He has a company on the coast now, to get a feel for, you know, what ideas he might have on how we could do that. And initially, his suggestion was maybe have a couple of five-minute videos that showcase different aspects of ourselves. And then in further discussion, he suggested, well, maybe, you know, because when you're trying to catch people's attention at a trade show or on the internet, you got a couple of minutes. So he suggested maybe five two-minute videos that showcase, again, five different aspects of our community and what we have to offer. And when asked about the price, it came in roughly 10, 10 grand. So the resolution that comes out of EDAC is to recommend to council that $10,000 be set aside for promotional video development for the city of Grand Forks.
Okay. So.
So it doesn't mean it has to be spent, but, you know, just so that there's an allocation there in case it's something that comes out of the brand management plan and further discussion.
I'm just wondering, what do we have in EDAC this year in the budget that we're now finally considering?
I can't remember. I believe it's $10,000.
$10,000. So this would be over and above the budget. You would like to add it as a special project?
Yeah, as a special project.
Counselor Wires?
I'm just wondering if we might be putting the cart before the horse at this time, considering that you want to do the plan first?
Yeah. Yeah. And I think one is contingent on the other.
Point to one, Mr. Mayor. I don't think there's a secondary on the motion.
I don't see a motion. I don't think there's yet.
I didn't see it as a motion yet, but.
Yeah, I haven't made it yet.
I didn't think you did. My ruling is we didn't have a motion on the floor yet.
Okay. So I'd like to make the motion.
Okay. And again, I guess what I'm cautioning is that has this been run through our staff in terms of where we're going to take that money from? I'm not hearing that answer in terms of if we budgeted for it. We haven't, we haven't put it in this year's budget, but do we have room for it at this point if we make this motion? Mr. Allen?
Mr. Mayor, because we haven't amended, because we haven't completed the budget process, later in the meeting today, we are going to be asking council to rescind the third reading of the budget so we can make an amendment to the budget. It'll allow staff the ability to meet council's need if they so choose to pass this resolution. So we could actually after tonight if that was to happen.
Excellent answer. Okay. So it would be over and above what we're currently budgeting for. And Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, just some clarification. You had talked about the money being used for film or ad films, and that would go up to RFP and all of that stuff following the regular procedures.
Yeah, it's over $5,000 for that. Counselor Wachigan?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this point, I'm speaking East of, I kind of agree with the comments made by Counselor Wires regarding to the cart before the horse. I believe that Castle Guard just recently came out with their promotional videos, and they aired them in the Bot spots at the Cooper International Airport. And I would personally like to find out information about other towns our size and their ability to make these kind of films and what kind of draw, or what's the payback been on them before we allocate that $10,000? Because whether or not we spend it or not, we have to tax it. The money's got to come from somewhere. So to tax to not know, I just think it's a blind investment, and I can't support it.
Further comment? I support it. I think at this point in time, it's urgent that we've gone through the process of branding, and we need to go out and sell ourselves. I think this is a modest promotional campaign, in that this doesn't preclude us coming back with way more details that Counselor Wachigan might be looking for. It just says, let's move ahead with planning a video of this nature. Counselor Crogg?
Actually, Counselor.
Counselor Kendall first.
Excuse me. Just to clarify, I think that the ask is to have the money allocated but not be used until the brand management plan would, if that plan required something like the videos to be done, we would have the money available this year. I think that's how the premise for the resolution was brought up. It was not that we necessarily would be doing it, but if the brand management plan said, yes, this is a good way to promote the brand, then rather than waiting another full year to the next budget before we could do anything, we would have some funds set aside to do it.
Counselor Wachigan?
Thank you. Yeah. But regardless, whether or not you use it or not for it, you still have to get the money from someone, right? You're still getting taxed for it. You're not to return it to the taxpayer if you don't use it. It's still going to be, you know, wanted paid for it. Secondly, we spent the $10,000 to get these videos made up, and then, then what? There's going to be exponentially that much more money having to be spent, whether it's for TV, whether it's for airport ads, whether it's for spot ads in amongst CHPC in Kelowna. Like, it's a small, it's $10,000 now is going to turn into a couple hundred thousand dollars later, is the way I see it. It's not just $10,000.
Okay. Counselor Smith, and then Counselor Wires?
I agree. It does represent a start, but we have, we're the hidden gem. We're a hidden gem in this community. And there's lots of people who could know about us that don't know about us and won't know about us unless we get our faces out there.
It's the way I neglect Counselor Crogg.
Yeah.
Counselor Wires, would you let Counselor Crogg go in front of me?
Yes, yes, certainly.
That's rightful possession? Is that what you were saying? No. Anyways, yeah, I've got, like, I support the idea. And, you know, if at the end of the day, we have to spend more money to reach our target, I would be okay with that. I just have, I guess, a concern that we're saying that we're going to allocate money to get the plan done. The plan may identify the film, so we need to have that money. But what about all the other stuff that the plan may identify? Shouldn't we have money for that? So I don't, and I guess through you to staff, if it's not allocated at this point till the plan's done, why can't we just do the money then?
Because we budget and plan ahead.
Yeah, you budget and plan, but you always have a contingency.
Mr. Mayor, typically during the end of the year, there are times where we have to do budget amendments. We usually want to complete those by the end of November annually in the event that there's unforeseen expenditures that come up during the year. Now, if there was a plan that was generated and council decided they wanted to act on part of that plan and then defer that into the 2014 budget, they could do that, but at least the plan would give them guidance. And it doesn't have to be, council might only want to produce the video this year and then have the branding management plan identified, and then add direct staff to come back in the 2014 budget with a budget amount for all of these activities. So that's where I would see it happening. Unless council was adamant that they want to have it done this year after the branding plan was identified and there was goals that the council thought they want to achieve this year, staff could be directed by council to proceed with that and develop a budget amendment towards the end of the year.
Yes, we could. Counselor Wires?
Well, and I'm just needing some clarification here on what we're spending in 2013. I see brand management plan for $5,000. Was the branding itself kicked over to 2013, $28,000? Or did that come out of 2012?
I think that was out of 2012.
It came out of 2012.
It came out of 2012.
And the $5,000 was only a figure that was thrown out, but there's not been a motion.
Oh, yeah.
For homes. And then we have RFPs out there right now for signs. What is the plan for the dollar signs for signs? Are we doing that this year?
Yes, I'm assuming that once the RFPs are in, that council will be reviewing.
Is there an allocated amount for that?
Yes, I do.
And, Mr. Mayor, in the capital budget, there's $30,000 identified. And then there was, I spoke to the CEO for the credit union. He asked me to bring forward once council had a plan in place, if there was interest from the board, they might have some money to contribute towards it as well. But there was a $30,000 budget allocated in this year's capital budget.
So hopefully those RFPs will come in.
So I'm recommending, you know, today, I cannot support a $10,000 right off the button here. I'd like to, I'd like to wait for the budget amendment period to see if we've reached all our other goals in November.
There's a comment. We're going to bring it to ahead here pretty quick. Counselor Smith.
I guess just part of the concern for trying to get this identified, like if it was possible to do it, is the seasons, taking advantage of filming periods, you know, getting the spring, summer, or summer anyway, summer, fall, and winter, and then the following spring, and have that really ready to roll out. If, because now it's going to take enough, if it goes even to the amendment period, you would have to wait basically a whole year again in order to catch and capture the kind of video you need in order to put that all.
And quick and succinct.
You didn't say that to him.
I know.
You rambled on.
Because I know you better.
Okay. So I think that when the branding is done, or the planning is done, it is going to identify this. I have, you know, similar thoughts as Counselor Smith for the actual filming. Like, to produce a video and then realize you didn't want to do this or do that, as opposed to capturing, I'm not going to, I don't want to use the word generic, but capturing footage for inclusion in a promotional video utilizing the timing and the seasons, I would think that, is it possible that EDAC could do it within their existing budget for 2013? So start the process of the generic before writing scripting and all of that to capture the seasons. Because you said, I think there's $10,000 left and possibly five going out.
They have 10 in their budget, but at this point in time, they're asking us to consider planning ahead for the possibility that they will require an additional 10. So I think that's what is incorporated in the motion.
And I understand that. I'm just saying, is there a way to compromise that we can get what time-sensitive stuff we need so that could be utilized in the 5,000 or whatever? And then when the video is actually produced, it's ready to be produced, and it would just be that footage is already captured.
Yeah. I guess I'd like to, I'd like to get some comfort that the EDAC will be working with our CAO to finalize some of the planning for the promotional plan and for the outcome of that plan. I think this is a cautionary move to add 10,000 to the budget at this point in time, but not necessarily spending it at all immediately.
Mr. Mayor, and for myself, I mean, when I'm on the phone with developers, they're calling me, or I've talked to people that are looking to invest in the community, and they're in consultation with me over different things, it would be a great tool for me to be able to send them off the list of the things that we offer along with the videos so they can take a quick look at. I mean, what I'm seeing right now is, you know, I'm trying to take the hologram, and if we go onto YouTube right now and you Google Grand Forks, sometimes it'll come up with a windstorm. That's what you see. You'll see.
North Dakota.
You see very limited aspects of what we have in our community. And it's one of the things I, you know, I point out to a couple of councils, is have a look at Kettle River fishing. You poke down the Kettle River, and it's a great representation of kind of the area. It's a beautiful video. Now, just saying, it would be immensely valuable to look for.
Okay. So our CAO is going to be working with the EDAC in terms of that. So the motion on the floor is that we add the $10,000 to the budget at this point with no firm commitment to when that might be necessary, but planning ahead with, again, planning the budget. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried?
Record line also, please.
I don't want to be left out.
Would you record that the consenting voice votes, please?
Thank you.
Okay. And.
I'm still working on my report.
Counselor Smith is still on board here?
On the 27th, I attended the merchants' meeting. I was unable to go to the thing at Castle Guard due to clients, but I was able to cut away for a couple hours for the merchant meeting. And there's still. And they're still, now that they've heard, you know, the city's commitment to downtown beautification, there was some concern, of course, that it didn't go down to 72nd and it didn't go up Second Street past the highway, but, you know, I said, well, we've got to start somewhere. Can't have it all in one day, sort of thing. So they were kind of okay with that. But I also indicated that, you know, hopefully council is looking forward to what the merchants are willing to do on their own behalf, seeing that the city has committed funds to making their environment a better place to be. So we're hashing out some ideas and trying to get some of these property, the property owners themselves on board as well.
Right.
So more will develop out of that.
Okay.
And then the last thing was my trip to Overton Creek with Barry Brando. And, yeah, I was very enlightened.
Yes.
So there's a lot of, I mean, there's a lot of damage that's being done by, you know, folks that haven't really been able to take ownership of that space. Fortunately, you know, the ATV club, they've been, you know, working together to, you know, come up with policies amongst their own group to take better care and show some stewardship for not only gilping grasslands, but any kind of outdoor area that they utilize for, for pressure.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel, I'm going to forego my city report in favor of a regional report, so can I have a motion to accept the city reports? Counsel Doherty, Counsel Smith, all those in favor? And the regional report adds two things. One is the raising of the ceiling on the budget for the recreation area, the aquatic center. There was a decision made at the regional table that we would go ahead with the option of raising that by 25%, which we have the option to do every five years. So it was a cautious move because basically it increases the potential for that budget to go up. The actual budget was then approved by the regional directors and by Area D Director, Rowley Russell, based on the fact that there was not substantial increases to the cost of the operation of the aquatic center, although the costs that are being driven by what is driving a lot of other costs, energy, staff, wages, a variety of things. So this was an effort, as council had instructed, to not reduce the hours of operation any further at this point. And so I'm happy to report that, you know, I think we're in a position where it will run very smoothly for the next year and the kind of future I see there is a continued pressure for us to keep costs under control. It is an expensive service that we share with the regional taxpayers. The second item is animal control 1511. I have to say that I have been asking, and I think council needs to think about this a bit more, there is a cooling off period going right now where the regional staff are putting together an incorporation of ideas from a variety of inputs from people. They're aiming at a progressive animal control bylaw that would give good direction to our paid staff, but also recognize that there are a number of things happening now that have to be considered, including the fact that there are a lot of small kennels and small breeding operations. So boarding kennels and breeding operations are being considered. They were taking place anyway and this would at least make them legal. So there's some careful wording going into that. All in all, again, though, the concept here is that it go out to a process. So what we'll see is a draft coming forward to us and then more discussion at a community level. We're trying to get some level of consensus. I think it was shocking for people to realize that we could have a meeting, there were 125 people there or something, that people would feel that passionate about their pets, but they do. So let's be careful with the rules we make about how we deal with it. And I think that's as far as I want to go with it today. The other item on that list, though, is cats. And you've got to think about it. Do you want to do cats or don't you? If you do, then this budget may have to reflect some cat costs, but I think if we say that we're interested, we need to begin ourselves to open up and discuss the cat issue with vets and various other community people. The cat thing is in our prerogative and as we were reminded the other day, the regional district often ducks its head and says, oh, we can't do this because of some 1582 rule about rats and the plague. But in fact, there are lots of examples where regional districts have gone ahead and supported cat bylaws. So we can either go it on our own, we could not do it at all, or we can ask for cooperation to do it regionally. But I'll give you some time to mull that over and we'll bring it up at another time. That's my regional district report. I'll answer any questions on it. Hearing none, a motion to accept the regional district report. Counselor Smith, Counselor Doherty, all those in favor? Carrie? Bringing us down to information items. And can I have a motion to accept as we dispose of these? Counsel Doherty, second Counselor Smith. And going through the list, Correspondents' and Poster from the Granby Wilderness Society, they have a presentation April the 3rd at the Boundary Museum and what's his name, the lizard guy will be there?
Sammy.
Sammy the lizard? Yep.
Oh, he's the tiger salamander.
Tiger salamander.
He's carnivorous.
Anyway, that would be an interesting one and shows you the breadth of operation of the Wilderness Society. Lives, Small BC, Small Business Assessment Notification. This is looking at, again, the eligibility criteria for benefits of Smart BC, a program that the Fordis BC is putting on. I think, what I'm hoping here is that they'll extend this offer to a few businesses and groups in town that seem to be relaxing their requirements. Grant Works International advising that there will be no GF this year. Receive for information. The Cancer Society, daffodil month will be April and receive for information. Moving down, the Strategic Community Investment Fund letter in our Small Community Grant, receive for information. And a letter from Christie Clark responding to the SEDA concerns of council, basically a form letter saying that our concerns are being passed on to the appropriate other bureaucrats. That's the list. Any comments or Counsel Smith?
Yeah, I was just interested to see news this morning where some of the 17 countries in Europe, there's up to 25% unemployment. And I, yeah, this doesn't smell any to me at all.
Counselor Crog?
Yeah, just on item B, which is the Live Smart, is there going to be a meeting with business people in the next little while?
This has been put out generally to all the business people, so I'm not sure how we could help circulate it. Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out how to let everybody know that they can phone, they can get an assessment, and they can get told about rebates to try and make their businesses more energy efficient. So is there a way, I don't know...
Could we see it up on our site?
To the site or, I would have liked to have seen, like they say, April 2013, I would have liked to have seen an advertisement in the local media for our business community. So it's a government...
I'm not sure whether they have taken out an ad in the paper or not for this new Live Smart program. They look like they've got more money than they've been able to give away.
Yeah.
Carl, I'm asking. You can talk.
I'll talk to Chris. Chris, how's the advertisement?
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay. All right. Anything further on this matter? All those in favor? Those? Carrie? The, this is the bylaw that we had the public hearing on the other night. And so this is for third reading to this bylaw. It's bylaw number 1947 and was an infill issue. You remember, we rezoned from single family. So can I have a motion for third reading of bylaw number 1947? Counselor Kendall? Counselor Shagan? Any discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Shagan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I wasn't present for that meeting, was there anybody here in attendance?
Only the owner of the property.
Only owner? Then nobody opposed?
Question? All those in favor? Opposed? Carrie? And the next item is, due to a need on our part to adjust a number of items in the budget, we are asking council at this point to rescind third reading of the bylaw so that we can make these adjustments, including the one that we passed this evening. So there are a number of things here that came after the fact and need to be adjusted. We're still within our timeframes and we need a motion to rescind third reading. Counselor Doherty? Counselor Smith? Discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Counselor Shagan? Do you wish your vote recorded or opposing?
Yes.
You'd like to be hold budget?
Well, I just don't agree with the spend, spend, spend mentality that we've been taking on.
Well, we weren't actually, we're not approving a budget, only that we're going back to change a number of things that were required.
Yes, to add more to it.
To change a couple of things, actually, and to add that last item.
Yeah, yes.
All right, you can vote that way. That's the rule. All right, that brings us down to the conclusion of the meeting. We have questions from the public.
Late, late.
Do we have a late item?
Two late items. Oh, my gosh. Okay, two late items. The first one I have is the EDAC recommendations to BEDC and I'll allow Counsel Kendall to present that.
Your worship, I'm going to have to excuse myself for a conflict of interest because my husband has a business at the airport and the airport is in the discussion in this paper.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay.
So Counsel Kendall, you are, you're on.
Thank you, your worship. As was discussed at the previous council meeting, there is a process now where the city's Economic Development Committee has been given license, I'm going to use that to present regional initiatives in a more direct fashion to the Boundary Economic Development Commission. So at the last EDAC meeting, a regional initiative was brought forward which deals with transportation in the area, which is either bus transportation or air transportation. And we've written up a recommendation, an initiative here to, and we're asking council just to endorse this initiative so we can present it to the Boundary Economic Development Commission for their consideration and what it is is to, for them to fund a feasibility study on the future of transportation in the area. And I think there's a, there's a great lack of bus service, the possibility of some type of air service. And in order to go to private enterprise or, well, I'm going to say private enterprise to facilitate expanding these services, we need to have some definitive numbers that we can take forward. So we're asking council just to endorse the initiative and we will send it to BEDC and if they feel that it's worthy, then they can do an economic or a feasibility study and bring it back, which is a benefit to the entire region.
Okay. Okay. Do we need to receive it or endorse it? Is it, would it be sufficient just to receive it and to, and then to move to pass it on to the BEDC from us or do we need endorsement? I'm not sure what would work best here.
I'd ask our CAO what the requirement would be.
Mr. Allen, do you think it's worth endorsing this? Would that make it more, I mean, we're talking, these things should flow through on a fairly regular basis. Some of them are going to be scoring goals and some of them are not.
Mr. Mayor, I agree. I think the, one of the recommendations that I would have is that first we have our, remember, we have a liaison here, the liaison between the Boundary Economic Development Committee, do we not? Counselor Kendall?
The mayor sits on that committee.
I sit on that, yeah.
Okay. Well, then I think that would just become as a resolution from our council to, then if our council was adopted, resolution, to push this on to the Boundary Economic Development Committee for their consideration.
Yes. But I guess in, for the sake of that communication link, if we could send it to Marguerite Rodwall from the city...
Yes.
I think that would formalize the transfer of this request from the committee to the other committee.
That's right.
Counselor Kendall?
The path that was laid out to take this forward was for EDAC to provide a succinct ask.
Yeah.
And it would go through Community Futures, who is actually the working body for BEDC. And it would be brought to BEDC through Community Futures is the path that I was...
Okay.
We were to give it to Wendy McCullough and she would bring it up to BEDC through Community Futures.
Counselor Smith?
I would still think that, you know, the EDAC can't really act independent of council. That, you know, even though there's a conduit there between the EDAC and the BEDC, that still council has to vet these things that EDAC is hoping to put through.
Okay. I guess the way I see it is that the Boundary Futures works for us. We hire them to do the job like the BEDC. And so the, any documents that go to Marguerite would be a formal presentation to Marguerite and the committee, which would go to Wendy and the Futures Group for a presentation to the board. So I thought that what they were asking was a formal relationship between you as chairs of your committee and Marguerite as chair of that committee. It would be like sending something, I don't know, I think it's a better route, but I'm open to...
I'm only passing on what I got and it was, it was all verbal.
We may be hanging up on a technicality. Counsel Crog?
Yeah, I think that, at my understanding of how everything was going to work is EDAC brings forward their recommendations to council. Council ratifies them or agrees with them and then passes that on if it is going to the BEDC or acts on it, depending on where the direction is. So I would see that, you know, there'd be a motion that we support this going forward and then it goes to BEDC or Community Futures or...
Let's not get hung up on the details. So the motion is that we take it forward to BEDC. Is that agreeable?
Yes.
Okay. And the motion was Counsel Kendall's, second, Counsel Smith's.
And just for clarification, all we're doing is we're supporting this to be pushed along.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor? Those? Carrie?
Thank you.
Yeah, I thought it was just transportation. We didn't worry about...
She cleaned up the...
She cleaned up the kitchen.
Awesome. Needs to split herself more often.
Changed the calendar from March to April.
Oh, yeah, confused.
Did you hide Easter eggs?
Okay. We have one more item, the grant and aid recommendation from this morning's committee of the whole. And I would ask that we frame, uh, some, uh, motion at this point. We were going to rescind, I, I believe, the current and look for, uh, presentation of a new grant and aid policy within a given period of time. Counselor Richagan?
Uh, at, at this point in time, uh, the portion that I, that I'm here to do is to move to rescind the grant and aid, the current grant and aid policy that is in place right now.
Can we have a second or three then, Counselor Crogg? Discussion?
Um, and I believe the discussion went from that point to that if there was anything else we wanted to do to look at a new grant and aid policy or maybe a, a community spirit of the community.
Community spirit program.
Thank you, or, or some alternate form, that would be dealt with in a separate motion. But right now, we're just dealing with rescinding what we have right now.
Agreed. Counselor Crogg?
Yeah, and that's why I started to get excited when you said to rescind that one and then bring forward another grant and aid policy. And I'm like, no, that's not what we were doing. We have some other options.
I hate to get you excited. Okay, the motion is on the floor to rescind the current grant and aid policy. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And now, uh, a, a motion in terms of direction would be in order. Counselor Crogg?
And I haven't framed anything, so this should be fun. That, uh, I would make a motion that, uh, we request staff to, um, bring forward some other options, um, to, to meet what we tried to accomplish in our discussions.
This morning.
This morning. And, you know, whether it's, part of it is a community spirit grant or not, but then also council would have input into staff to give them their ideas of what they would like to see. So in other words, we're gonna request staff to come forward with some other options.
Okay, and could you shorten that into a motion?
I just did.
Okay.
Other options. Somebody will make it sound good.
The request is to, to ask our staff to bring forward some options for the grant and aid.
No.
Would that include?
No grant and aid.
No grant and aid.
Okay, I'm, I'm using that term loosely.
Other options for supporting our community.
Okay, and we're gonna change away from the word grant and aid.
Which would include, uh, in-kind work that the city does? Isn't that what we discussed?
But that, sorry.
That's part of the options.
Or feet per service.
That would be one of the options, I think, that would come forward. But we're just looking for, um, options. And I did say it quite awesomely this morning, but I forgot.
Yeah, you did. Okay, so, can I ask, uh, Mr. Allen, do you have enough to bring, to, to bring forward some, uh, some ideas?
I think, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think to, to, I'd just like to say that, I'm getting the sense that council wants to see some options for maybe an operational item that would be included along with some in-kind support for community events that, um, that would guide the, uh, the community in, in showing the council support for these other community events without financial contributions. That's kind of what I'm hearing right now, that we can draft it that way. And maybe potentially some operational items that would offset those things, that would be, that would fall under the manager of community services that would help promote specific events, somewhere along those lines?
I think that's, that's a good start. I think that, that captured some of the discussion that we had this morning. Counselor Smith, Crogg, and Kendall.
Okay, I, I guess my, um, my concern with excluding any kind of financial contributions is, is like the presentation made by BDAC, is that automatically they'd be excluded, in which case they wouldn't qualify for the matching grant. So, I don't know.
Well, some of the old wording addressed some of these things. I don't think we're throwing the baby out with the bathwater here.
Oh, yeah.
I think that there are some, some basic, uh, concepts here of community support that will be retained. Mr. Allen?
And I think, Mr. Mayor, in, in, in addressing that, in addressing that, uh, that would be kind of some of the operational limitations that we might contract a service for those events that they might have put on. So, we'll frame those up for, for council to consider. So, they might want to have a, the arts group put on a specific number of events that exhibit the local art in the community for, for the support, something along those lines. And then council can morph those things into what they would like to see them.
Yeah, I think if we take a shot at it with that, at this point, it will give us something to work on and begin to develop as our policy. We need to start fresh and I think that's what we're doing here tonight.
Absolutely.
So that motion is being framed as we speak.
Did you want me to read out something that I have here?
Sure.
Probably I said it, I guess.
That's what Counselor Crogg's exact words.
Direct staff to bring forward options such as a community spirit program policy which could include community event oriente, oriented funding for council's consideration.
Good. Question, all those in favor, opposed, carried. So we look forward to the work we need to do on that. All right, that brings us down to the conclusion and comments and, uh, questions from the gallery. Please, if you have any, come on down. Mr. Les Johnson?
Yeah. I kind of agree with you. I mean, ten grand now, then, you make the video, then how do you place it? Cost money, takes effort, I understand. So if you can't afford to make a video now, maybe you should solicit people in the community to make a video. And maybe instead of spending ten grand on a professional-made video at a grand a minute, which is actually not bad, you could say, well, have a contest and put five grand in the kitty or something like that. And take half that other money, the five grand, and say, well, we'll, uh, spend some money to here to get somebody to get heated up on how to edit this all together, to make, to go these little home movie videos or whatever people have submitted, to turn it into a product that can speak to, about Grand Forks by Grand Forkers. Aside from that, you guys could all do the Harlem Shake. It's a bit late, there's a hundred thousand ahead of you, but, you know, or, or gang nab style or something.
So, uh, to, uh, to answer your question, um, the ten thousand figure, if we're budgeting for that, would require an RFP and, and so I would expect that we would be going out to the public and looking at the options.
Chalk it down.
Yeah, maybe it's only a five thousand offering.
Bring it in just below what you need for RFP so you can use that, the income, like I said, or that money to, to, to run a contest, you know, over the summer or something.
And I would, I would hope that's work done by the committee, by, um, BDAC.
Yeah, that's just, throwing it out there. I'd like to see you guys do the Harlem Shake.
Counselor Smith?
Just, just speaking to the contest idea, I mean, the same was suggested about branding.
No, I understand that, but you do a video and, and yeah, you can pay money to get it professionally done. And then you can have a whole bunch of people in the community saying, oh, I don't like that, why they do this, but if you're gonna make a couple of promotional videos and it's made by people in the community, and you have people in the community voting on what they like and stuff like that, in a sense, your, your butts are covered. They, they made it, they said what's good, they can argue amongst themselves.
But just like anything, there's gonna be, again, it's always divided, it's always divided.
I, I understand that, but, I understand that, but rather than have people say, oh, you, you guys brought in a hired pen from, doesn't even live here, and look what they gave us, ooh, you know, like, it's by people in the community, about the community, I think that's all.
We hear that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Harlem Shake, be fun.
Further comment? Mr. Ronnie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I would like to thank you and the council for starting the process of taking care of the Overton watershed. The Gilpin Committee will appreciate that. May I ask some questions about this morning's, that were in this morning's?
Yeah, certainly.
Is there any recent information on the welcome signage?
Yes, the RFPs have gone out and we're, uh, about, the closing date on it is Friday. Friday, we'll be reviewing the submissions and hopefully the timeframe to get them in will be right away.
Thank you. Line painting?
We contract out and realize.
And the contract has been let or has it? Yes.
Contract has been awarded.
Does this, does the city have any influence on the Ministry of Transportation? I assume that the lines on Highway Three are painted by MCN or a contractor.
Yes, you're right.
Particularly bad, uh, well, a lack of painted, the arrow and the lines are missing and you cross the bridge going east. And turn to go up the Grand Road.
So it's a danger?
And I was almost, I was well over, somebody, there are no lines to indicate where the lanes are.
Right, and so an inexperienced driver wouldn't, wouldn't know that.
If, if anybody can have any influence, I'd like to see them get at it.
Good, good message.
I noticed in the information, an item, engineering technologist will be hired. Now, what does this person do?
Sure. What we've done is we've, we've reallocated a person from Public Works, as we had some internal transition. Uh, we didn't hire any new staff, we're just taking the laborer position and, or a, a position at Public Works and we're, we're bringing in an engineering technologist. This person is going to work in the Engineering and Development Department so we can finish off, uh, all the projects that we have going on related to, uh, engineering and development. Uh, this is the critical service for seeing development, uh, opportunities in our community completed, such as the heritage program that was started and not completed. Uh, this person is going to be out in the field, basically performing the, the duties that the manager of technical services was performing in the past under her guidance. This person is going to be the, uh, uh, liaisoning with, uh, different groups in Public Works and giving them the specifications on the type of work that they're doing out there, making sure they're doing the work correctly, um, meeting the specs of the subdivision servicing bylaw when a development comes into place, uh, these types of things. So, and actually, it's the, the jack of all trades from an internal position.
But that's an internal hiring. What is a source production plan?
Source?
Source production plan?
Source protection plan, Mr. Mayor. It's a water source protection plan. So, so along those lines, sort of kind of like the watershed, uh, situation, uh, the Kettle River Source Protection and Watershed Protection Plan is the, it's along with very similar, the same lines.
Okay, thank you. A staff concentration on downtown for Fridays, what does that mean?
I'm assuming Fridays is a good day to spruce ourselves up and look good for visitors, but...
Yes, now what we're doing is we're starting to show a little bit more presence in the mornings. First thing in the morning, our staff is going to the downtown core and we're doing a once a month or as needed blitz so we can get through the whole downtown core to remove dog feces and garbage and whatnot. So when people do come into town in the weekends, that the town is in a position to be, uh, more presentable.
That's a really early morning.
Our staff will do that first thing in the morning on Friday mornings and go down there and get ready for the weekend.
Okay. Finally, Mr. Mayor, water meter messaging meetings are ongoing. What is water meter messaging?
We have to tell people it's inevitable, get used to it. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, as part of the twenty thirteen budget, uh, the, prior to us bringing forward a water metering plan, we wanna make sure that the community is educated and understands why water metering is coming, the benefits to the asset management plan. It's an ongoing messaging program that will enlighten the community so when the, when the metering program is discussed at council, uh, the community will be able to speak, uh, in, uh, full understanding of the metering program.
Exactly what I said. Thank you very much. Further from the floor.
Good evening, your worship. Counselors, my name is Nigel James and I've resided in Grand Forks for three years and two-thirds of a year. The reason why that is important is because of the bills I get from the city. I hadn't meant, I hadn't planned to, um, I, my original plan was to pass kudos to various people, um, but however, some of the things I've heard tonight, I have, uh, perhaps revised my, uh, my opinion slightly. Is this one working? Firstly, on the subject of city park, I'm very pleased and thankful, thankful of the city to going ahead with the modeling and the preparation for the rugby club and the soccer field, uh, the soccer pitch and rugby pitch, um, and moving pop balls and trees and that sort of thing. That was, you know, it was quite excellent. Um, I made inquiries today with one of the leaders of the rugby club and sort of watched the situation before I visited council. And it appears as though the soccer club have rather sort of drawn in their horns slightly. I wonder if anybody, I, I had played my last game of soccer at the age of eleven, which was a couple of years ago. And, um, since then, um, I have no interest particularly in soccer whatsoever, um, therefore I haven't been involved in it in Grand Forks or anywhere else. But I'm wondering if you could manage to put some emphasis on the need for young people playing sport and using the soccer pitch. Uh, the monies are partly raised for the, um, for the posts, um, and they would be ready to go in, except it's just that the soccer side, uh, haven't completed their half of the bargain. Merely, I'm trying to pass the buck, um, because I'm not involved in it either one way or the other, or perhaps remember I did make the odd comment about it a couple of years past. Secondly, um, Silver Kettle Village, Silver Kettle Home, I'm not quite sure where it's, anyway, uh, we've got it now, it's been up and running nearly a year and it's, uh, to the advantage of, of the city, I'm quite sure. Um, the, uh, one of the selling points was that it was going to bring in young people and their families to high-paying jobs in order to staff the Silver Kettle Home. I'm wondering if the city has got any figures on that, that what affected as the, I say, that selling point of why we wanted Silver Kettle Village? Why, uh, if, if there's been any, uh, information feedback from higher-paying jobs and families moving into the city? It's, it's a, a long-term question, I'm sure it takes some research.
Okay, Counselor Richagan is chomping at the bit here to, to comment on that.
Yeah, I, I do wanna just mention a quick little story here that, uh, at least I found interesting and it happened twice on two separate flights, um, one from Kelowna to Vancouver and one back from Vancouver to Kelowna. I actually sat beside people, uh, a couple, one from West Kelowna and one from Winfield, who, who actually were asking where I was from, what I did. And, and I said, did you know where Grand Forks was? I assumed you're two hours away, of course, you know where Grand Forks is. And they said, well, not really, but my friend, my, my, my friends have now moved or relocated to Grand Forks. And they're about my age to work at the Silver Kettle Village.
Excellent.
So, so I know for a fact and just, just by chance, sitting on an airplane, you know, it's like people, that there's, there are people who are...
Well, that, that's two who've come. There was a comment about the, uh, the number of staff to run, it was a hundred and twenty. So we've still got a long way to go between two and maybe a hundred and twenty. I mean, that's all type of staff, et cetera. I'm wondering if the city's got any rep, you know?
I don't, I don't know whether we've ever, uh, whether we've asked for that or whether it would be necessary. I'm, I'm in there on a fairly regular basis and, uh, it's, uh, not fully, um, used at this point. There are a couple of areas that are still yet to be filled and they're not up to their full staffing complement, so I think it's growing. But in the complex care area, there are a number of high-paid positions and there are a number of other cleaning staff and laundry staff and various other kinds of things that are fairly close to union wages, but it is a non-union operation. Counselor Smith, do you have a comment?
I think there would be useful information to have, but, you know, EDAC has, you know, set a goal about increasing population here.
Yeah, I think you could get that just by going in and asking the manager there for some basic information.
Yes, I mean, I thought about going myself and I, I, I came to the conclusion they'd shown me the exit very rapidly.
Or a red.
In fact, my, my sons have actually, they're rather happy about that because it's not a long journey from where I reside now to my next place of abode. The last one was after the fitting out of the, um, of the kettle vision, uh, Silver Kettle, and this is rather a downturn thing, a lot of litter was left around and the wind and the weather has blown it all over and it's a lot of fitting out stuff, plastic and goodness knows what else. And it's a lot of fitting out stuff, plastic and goodness knows what else, window, bits of advertising and so on. I'm wondering if we ought to perhaps invite the contractors who did the final job and so on to come back and do their cleanup. They always say that the job is never finished until the paperwork is done. And this particular case is the paperwork littered all over private property and the extension of Highway of 70th Avenue.
Nigel, I haven't seen that, but I'll certainly drive by and keep an eye to see if that's the case. I think it would be up to them to clean it up.
Oh, indeed. Unfortunately, it's blown away from Silver Kettle, and I'm sure they kept their little area.
On my next visit, I will speak with Michelle and suggest that if they could clean up the regional area there where it's blown around.
They will no doubt say that it's not all theirs, but I suspect most of it is.
All right, thank you.
On to bylaws.
I'm just keeping an eye on the clock here, we have been going since nine o'clock this morning.
I realize that. And I'm trying to be as quick as I can.
I know you are.
The watering bylaw, I saw somebody watering their front lawn, I think it was two days ago. That's a little excessive, however, that's their prerogative. But there was, I made the comment that the bylaw, I believe, needs to be adjusted whereupon certain exceptions, the city watering Dick Bartlett Park and other places like that should be listed down, and City Park as well. Otherwise, we all obey the same last law. And if there is need for an exception, and I'm sure there is, then put it in the bylaw so that people can read it. Anyway, that's on that one. We now come, yes, the dog bylaw. I only, I heard from a good source, a reliable source, that after that meeting, there was, and it was published in the Gazette, although not in as many words, there was an altercation afterwards. Whereupon the animal bylaw officer, sorry, the animal control officer and the pound keeper were intimidated, detained by people parking their vehicles around their own cars. I believe blood, I don't think flu, but fists were exchanged. And I would only hope that, certainly from the city council, that we will support our officials in whatever action they are going to take. And I intend to write also the same to the RDKB. It is unfortunately a very black mark, probably not on city people themselves, but maybe on those who live further away. I noted that it was reported in the police report in the paper. And no doubt Sergeant Harrison, Staff Sergeant Harrison, knows some of the details and are trying to weigh up what the outcome is going to be. But I would hope the city would support our officials as much as possible.
Thank you, Nigel. I'm not wanting to rush you here, but...
No, I realize, however, I'm coming to some rather more important things.
Can you please?
Yes, I will. And I realize you've been going since nine this morning, and unfortunately, I couldn't be there. The, I understand that rumor has it that there might be a proposed commercial vehicle bylaw and parking bylaw, et cetera. Is there any truth in that one piece?
I haven't heard one being entertained at all. Maybe we have noise bylaws and things like that.
All right, my jungle drums are working better than yours, I guess, but maybe that is not the case. Maybe a truck bylaw.
Mr. Mayor, we've asked somebody to remove their vehicles off of city property that are larger commercial vehicles that have no business being on city property. The, you know, the commercial vehicles right now, that would be handled in the zoning bylaw. So no, we haven't had any discussions. We talked internally to staff about that, with the noise, with the idling of vehicles, because there's an anti-idling bylaw as well.
Yeah, not specifically commercial vehicles.
Thank you. The branding, I won't go into the branding because you asked 10 people who get tender finances on that. But I am concerned generally regarding money or lack of it. For instance, I did some calculations on my film, which the city kindly sends me every two months. And that's the reason why I said three years and two-thirds of a year. During that period of time, my costs have increased on average overall, 4.3% per annum, which is twice about the normal rate of inflation in the country. And I'm wondering if that is, if there is a valid reason for that. I've no doubt you will say that prices have gone up. The only thing I can't equate to that is how much have wages gone up? Because they've got to be paid as well. It's pluses and minuses.
Nigel, I have to ask you to wrap this up because it is...
All right.
I would encourage you not to save them up, but to come...
Unfortunately, these have mostly come up. I wouldn't have raised these except for the last few things concerning, well, one was the... It strikes me as the way that money has been bandied around tonight, as if it is of no consequence. We're talking about $10,000 for a film, et cetera, good thing. But why don't we get hold of people and say, spruce up your own business downtown? Although we're getting the city to do it, we're getting individuals to do it. The other thing is, I'm concerned, still concerned, about the potential for the fire truck and the chipper. The argument for the chipper, it said, with an expected cost of $33,000, almost half the purchase cost can be recouped by with saved contractor fees. That's like trying to equate potatoes in the ground with a meal at a restaurant. They haven't included such things as all total costs, the all total costs of towing the chipper, of the workers involved doing it, of loading the chips, et cetera, et cetera. They have cheated. I'd say they've cheated regarding the figures.
Nigel, I'm going to have to cut you off here. It is reaching a point where we don't dedicate this much time to anyone speaking from the floor. So you've covered like several major points, and I'm asking you at this point to sum it up.
All right, I'll sum it up. Basically, I think we've got to be very careful about what money is spent from the city. Because I suspect that every single councillor, when he put forward on the platform where it was at the all candidates meeting, said, I'm going to be physically responsible. I'm not sure I am seeing much of that. With some of the councillors, yes, in others, not.
Thank you, Nigel. Any further from the floor? Hearing none, can I have a motion to adjourn? Counselor Doherty or Counselor Smith?